New council members. At the conclusion of tonight's meeting, we will have, of seven people on council, we will have welcomed in the past thirty days or forty-five days, five new council members. A little bit about the agenda tonight. In a minute, I'm going to deliver the invocation. That'll be followed by the pledge. We have a special guest, Kevin Chin, who I'll introduce later, and he'll lead us in the pledge. And then we have a special recognition. Following the recognition, we'll have the public comment. Anybody that would like to comment on an active item on the agenda is welcome to do so. And then following that, we will go to canvassing the election. It'll be a hand vote by the council. And then following that, we'll go to the oath of office. We'll have Judge Urbachek, and I'll introduce him at the time. He will give the mayor her oath of office. That'll be followed by former Congressman Pete Olson, who will deliver the oath of office to the at-large council member. And then Carol will administer the oath of office to the District Two council member. So at this time, please stand for the invocation. Heavenly Father, thank you for the wisdom and grace you provided Nancy and me during our time as mayor and first lady. You have been with us every step of the way. And thank you for each one of the council members and their families, because they have served this city with honor and integrity. As we go forward, bless Mayor McCutcheon and her council and provide them with the same wisdom and grace you have shown us. We ask your blessing on our staff, our first responders, and volunteers, and thank you for their service to our community. We pray your blessing on our residents and ask that you guide them and protect the brave men and women of our military and special forces. Please bless our elected leaders throughout the great state of Texas and the United States of America. Father, we love you and give you all the glory and ask all these things in the name of your son, Jesus Christ. Amen. I'm going to ask Kevin Chin. Kevin, if you'd come up, please. Kevin's a sophomore at Clements High School and is the lead butterfly garden volunteer for the Parks Department. He has a strong passion for math and won the UIL number sense state championship this year. In 2023, he was part of the Texas team that won the Math Counts National Championship. Outside of academics, he enjoys volunteering in city parks to help improve and maintain our community spaces. Kevin, if you could lead us in the pledge, the nation's flag, and then the Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation and God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Give me a seat, please. We've got a special recognition. If I could ask Cicely Wu to come up, please. Chloe Foo and Jing Li. Did I miss anybody? I did miss somebody. Hi. Coach, would one of you like to speak? Introduce it, and then I'll...
Good afternoon, everyone. It's truly an honor to stand here today as a founder and the head coach of Blue Legend Swim School. Thank you for this opportunity to share a little bit of our story. My name is Jing Li. I was professional artistic swimmer for twelve years and a national champion. In 2014, I moved to the U.S. from China and chose Sugarland to begin the new chapter with my husband, Shu Yang. Many friends told us that Sugarland was welcoming, diverse, and full of opportunity. And they were absolutely right. We started our swim school here, and it's been an amazing journey ever since. Today, Blue Legend is proud to be the largest swim school in the Sugarland area. In 2020, we opened our very own indoor heated pool. And since then, we taught thousands of children how to swim, not just the skill in the water, but also confidence and the true love of sport. Two of those kids are the reason we're here today, Chloe and Cicely. They started swimming with us eight years ago. I still remember teaching them how to blow bubbles and kick their legs. Today, they're training nearly twenty hours a week, sometimes spending five hours in one session, wear four-pound weight on their legs, repeating the same movement over and over again. Their dedication has paid off. They've become the national champions. But their dream is even bigger. They were pushed themselves beyond the limit because they always had one goal, to representing their country on the world stage. And this year, they did it. After three rounds of highly competitive national selection, they earned their place on the U.S. youth national team. And this August, thank you. And this August, they were proudly representing the United States at the World Youth Artistic Swimming Championship in Greece. Of course, their dream doesn't stop there. They hope to be representing the Team USA at a future international championship and one day at the Olympic Games. I've had the honor of coaching them through their journey. And I'm so grateful for all the incredible coaches who supported them along the way. Their caring coach Alexandra has done an outstanding job leading them this past year. And I also want to give the special thanks for the Coach Hannah, Coach Natalia, and all the instructors who taught them how to swim in their earliest days. I also want to sincerely thanks to the city of Sugarland for supporting our school and the youth in this community. Your encouragement helps athletes like Chloe and Cicely grow and dream big. On behalf of my husband, Shu Yang, and our entire Blue Legend team, thank you for the mayor and the city council for recognizing our school, our athletes, and our coaches. We're truly honored. We believe that Chloe and Cicely will be representing the United States with pride this summer, and we hope they will bring home great achievement and honor to the city of Sugarland. Thank you all so much.
Let me read briefly what we have for Cicely. The city of Sugarland proudly recognizes Cicely Wu for her exceptional dedication, discipline, and achievement in the sport of artistic swimming. As a resident of our community, Cicely has trained for over seven years at Blue Legend Swim School under the expert guidance of head coach Jing Li and coach Alexandra Berdova. Through perseverance and excellence, she rose above hundreds of elite athletes across the country, advancing through three rounds of rigorous selection to earn a place in the USA Artistic Swimming National Team. Her selection is a testament to her extraordinary talent and commitment. She will proudly represent the United States at the 2025 World Aquatics Youth Artistic Swimming Championships in Athens, Greece, the highest level of international competition for her age group. Congratulations. And for Chloe. City of Sugarland proudly recognizes Chloe Foo for her exceptional dedication, discipline, and achievement in the sport of artistic swimming. As a resident of the community, Chloe has trained for over seven years at Blue Legend Swim School under the expert guidance of head coach Jing Li and coach Alexandra Berdova. Through perseverance and excellence, she rose above hundreds of elite athletes across the country, advancing through three rounds of rigorous selection to earn a place on the USA Youth Artistic Swimming National Team. Her selection is a testament to her extraordinary talent and commitment. She will proudly represent the United States at the 2025 World Aquatics Youth Artistic Swimming Championships in Athens, Greece. Congratulations. And Alexandra. We proudly recognize you for your exceptional contributions to the sport of artistic swimming and outstanding achievements as both an athlete and a coach. A former member of the Ukraine National Artistic Swimming Team, Alexandra is a world-class athlete whose career includes ten silver medals at the European Championships and three silver medals at the World Championships, a testament to her dedication, skill, and competitive spirit on the global stage. With over five years of coaching experience spanning Europe and the United States, Alexandra has made a profound impact on the next generation of swimmers. As a former coach of the Switzerland Junior and Youth National Team, she successfully guided numerous athletes to national championship titles, further solidifying her reputation as a top-tier coach. She brought her passion and expertise to the Blue Legend Swim Team, where she currently serves as head coach of the youth age group. Under her leadership, Blue Legend athletes have achieved remarkable success, including gold, silver, and bronze medals at the USA National Championships. Congratulations to you. Proclamation from the Office of the Mayor. Whereas Blue Legend Swim School, founded in 2014 by Coach Jing Li, has become a pillar of athletic excellence in Sugarland, training national champions and members of the U.S. national team. And whereas, under the visionary leadership of founders Shu Yang and Coach Lee, herself a seven-time national artistic swimming champion, Blue Legend Swim School has inspired thousands of young athletes to dream big and pursue greatness in and out of the water. And whereas multiple locations across the greater Houston area and a trusted reputation among parents, Blue Legend Swim School continues to inspire and develop young athletes through expert instruction and dedicated leadership. Congratulations. And I'm going to ask Councilmember Noshad Kamali. He was the one that introduced this to us. If you'd come down. Councilmembers, I think we'll just stand on the dais, and we'll get some pictures.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Cicely Wu, and I'm thirteen years old. I am truly grateful for your support and this opportunity to share my story with you today. I started artistic swimming when I was just six years old, back when I couldn't even reach the floor of the four-foot pool I was training in. I still remember how I had to stand on my tippy toes just to be able to see and hear what my coach was saying. At age nine, I competed in my first nationals alongside my team, Blue Legend Artistic Swimming, where we earned a silver medal, the first of many medals for our team. From that moment on, we kept growing together, improving each year, and turning every challenge into a chance to become better and better. Because at the end of the day, it's not just about the medals, it's about the journey, the friendship, the friendships, and that indescribable feeling you get when you're doing something you're truly passionate about. This year, I qualified for the USA Youth National Team with my amazing duet partner and teammate Chloe Foo. And I am so proud to have the chance to present the United States at the Youth World Championships in Greece later this summer. This is a dream I have been working towards for many years. I want to express my sincere gratitude to Blue Legend and to our dedicated head coach, Coach Lee, who has taught me since the summer of 2016, when I was still learning the basic swimming strokes. She has watched me grow from a little girl who was crying at every single practice to the swimmer I am today. I also want to thank Coach Atalia, Coach Sasha, my teammates, my parents, and this wonderful community for their unwavering support. None of this would have been possible without you. And speaking of my coaches, today is my Coach Sasha's birthday. So happy birthday, Coach Sasha. Thank you for always being there for me and trusting me, even when I didn't myself. Looking ahead, I hope to continue to represent the United States and to compete at the international level, making Sugarland and the U.S. proud. I hope to be a role model for younger swimmers, showing them that was hard work, perseverance, and a true passion for something you can achieve more than you could ever imagine. Thank you so much for believing me, and I can't wait for what's up ahead. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Chloe Foo, and I'm from the Blue Legend Artistic Swimming Club. First, I'd like to thank the city of Sugarland and everyone here today for giving me this wonderful opportunity to be a part of today's event. It truly means a lot to me. My path to becoming the athlete I am today began years ago, when I was seven. This is my eighth year of doing the sport I love the most. Of course, there were many challenges I had to face each training, such as soreness, fatigue, and sometimes even nervousness. But through it all, I've grown so much as an athlete and as a person. I'm so grateful for the Blue Legend Swim School for their unwavering support, which has felt like a second home to me ever since I started. I also cannot thank my amazing coaches enough for their guidance and encouragement throughout the years. This is my second year being selected to the USA Artistic Swimming Youth National Team. And this summer, I feel so honored to represent the U.S. at the World Championships held in Athens, Greece. I'll be giving it my all and will push myself to further improve. Looking ahead, my biggest dream is to one day compete at the Olympic Games for Team USA. I also hope to inspire other young people in Sugarland to follow their passion, whatever it may be, and never stop chasing their dreams. Thank you again to all your support for young athletes like me, and thank you for having me today. I'm proud to be a part of this community, and I'll carry your support with me wherever I go.
Before I open the public comment, I'd like to remind people that you can comment on an active agenda item. It has to be on topic. If it's not on topic, we'll cut the mic. I'll excuse you from the podium. If you don't leave the podium, a disruption of a public meeting will be declared. At that time, an officer will escort you out. If you don't go with the officer, the officer will help escort you out. So again, I hope not to... We had to clear the room at the last council meeting. I hope not to do that this time. We have one person signed up to comment. It's Kyle Stanley. Kyle, if you'd come down, please.
And this is in tribute and in honor to you and Carol. Good evening and good evening, City Council. My name is Kyle Stanley, former candidate for Sugarland mayor and a longtime Sugarland resident going back to 1990, who, like many of y'all, came here by way of southwest Houston and west Houston, in my case, Westbury and to electric state fleetward in the energy corridor, with a heavy embassy next door in Quail Valley way down yonder in Missouri City in between. I come tonight to speak on item number eight as we embark bravely and with sunny optimism about the future of this great city. Before I continue, I want to say thank you to Joe Zimmerman for nine years of service as mayor of our city, and many more, dating back to when I was embarking upon my senior year at Dulles High School and you got appointed to P&amp;Z. Of course, the results haven't been perfect. And in fact, while there have been times I've been on your side, be it flight control, for instance, there have also been times where we've bit heads on redevelopment, for instance. But it doesn't take away the fact that public service is a noble cause. One word per John Whitmire's words, you have to quote "deal the ankle biters." To Joe, who I've known since my days in Sugarland 101, thank you for your service to our city. And I only wish the best for you, Nancy, Allison, and the others in your next season of life. And to Carol McCutcheon, our new mayor, I wish you the best of luck going forward as we embark upon a new era for which forward is the only direction. That means tackling our economic development challenges, bolstering and making First Column stronger and better, Town Square as well, especially west of City Hall, reinvigorating Sugar Creek, reimagining Lake Point preferably with that nice missing middle housing and top-notch office and retail to activate that beautiful waterfront, making Track Five vibrant beyond Smart Financial and MB Anderson. And last but not least, saving and reviving our beloved and beautiful 100-year-old Char House. Not to mention keeping our public safety top-notch and focused on protecting, preserving life and property, ensuring our infrastructure remains the best around and our parks are virgin and our taxes low. Because surpassing the Woodlands to become number one on niche and one as opposed to three on livability should be our goal. Because for better or worse, when it comes to model cities, Sugarland should look up to, it must go in boldly in the direction of the Woodlands. No excuses, no exceptions. For which those who don't consider the Woodlands to be a model SL should look up to, or even more essentially retort by telling me to move to the Woodlands to serve a special place in hell. And not just the Woodlands, I also recommend our city look to other models as well. Metairie outside New Orleans, New Orleans, where I have family ties, Coral Gables, gorgeous Miami suburb, where the Banning Oaks is as noble as the Oaks, and Craig Myrtles, a place my old friend Jordan from Miami would know by heart. And also Alpharetta outside of Atlanta, as well as Frisco and McKee north of Dallas, even Reston, Virginia, outside DC. But like Natasha Benfield's song for Carol McCutcheon, "Today is where your book begins, the rest is still unwritten." In closing, thank you for your service, Joe Zimmerman. Thank you also to Noshad Kamali and William Ferguson. And best of luck to you, Jim Von der Haar, Sanjay Singal, and Carol McCutcheon. God bless you, and God bless the good people of Sugarland.
Thank you, Kyle. We don't have anyone else signed up to speak. That doesn't mean you can't come to the podium. Is there anyone else? Here and done, we're going to move on to item number eight. Item number seven, canvass the election. A. First and final consideration. Consideration of an action on City of Sugarland, ordinance number 2378, in ordinance of the City Council of the City of Sugarland, Texas, canvassing the returns and declaring the results of a runoff election held on June 7, 2025, to elect a mayor, a councilman, a council member to at-large position one and a council member to District Two. I'm going to read the ordinance as required by law. Ordinance number 2378. In ordinance of the City Council of the City of Sugarland, canvassing the returns and declaring the results of a runoff election held on June 7, 2025, to elect a mayor, a council member to at-large position one and a council member to single-member District Two. Whereas the City Council called a runoff election to be held on June 7, 2025, to elect a mayor, a council member to at-large position one and a council member to single-member District Two. And whereas, notice of the runoff election was given as required by law, and the returns of the election have been made proper, officers and canvass by the City Council. Now therefore, be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Sugarland, Texas, section one, that at the runoff election, the following votes were cast for the following candidates. The Office of Mayor. William Ferguson. Total votes: 5,405, percentage: 46.95. Carol McCutcheon: 6,107, percentage: 53.05. At-large Position One. Maggie Horgan: 4,281, percentage: 41.44. Jim Von der Haar: 6,050, percentage: 58.56. Single-member District Two. Sanjay Singal: 2,347, 75.13%. Nasser Hussain: 777, percentage: 2487. That the following persons are declared to have been elected to the following offices. For Mayor, Carol McCutcheon. At-large Position One, Jim Von der Haar. Single-member District Two, Sanjay Singal. Section Three. That the person declared to have been elected in section two are hereby appointed to the Sugarland Development Corporation, adopted on first and final consideration this day, June 17, 2025, in accordance with Article Two of the City Charter. I make a motion to approve. I've got a second by our mayor pro tem Suzanne Watley. It requires a hand vote. If you'll vote at this time, please. And it passes six to zero with one of the council members absent. At this time, we're going to move on to item eight, the oath of office. A little bit about how we're going to handle this. In a minute, I'm going to introduce Judge Urbachek. He will administer the oath of office to the mayor, Carol McCutcheon. At that time, after that, former Congressman Pete Olson will administer the oath of office to Jim Von der Haar. Following that, Carol McCutcheon, the new mayor, will administer the oath of office to Sanjay. Mayor Dean Urbachek is the judge at Fort Ben County at Court at Law Number Six. He's also a former mayor of the city of Sugarland. Dean, if you would come forward and administer the oath of office to the Merilek Carol McCutcheon.
Let me comment. It's an honor to do the oath of office for my friend Carol and the first female mayor of the city of Sugarland. Carol, if you could place your right hand on the Bible, please. Aye. State your name, please.
Aye, Carol McCutcheon.
Do solemnly swear or affirm
Do solemnly swear.
that I will faithfully execute the duties of the Office of Mayor
Will faithfully execute the duties of Mayor
of the city of Sugarland
Of the city of Sugarland
county of Fort Ben
County of Fort Ben
state of Texas
State of Texas
and will, to the best of my ability
And will, to the best of my ability
preserve, protect, and defend
Preserve, protect, and defend
the Constitution and laws of the United States
The Constitution and laws of the United States
and of this state
And of this state
and the charter and ordinances of the city
And the charter and ordinances of the city
and I furthermore solemnly affirm
And I furthermore solemnly affirm
that I have not directly or indirectly paid
That I have not directly or indirectly paid
offered or promised to pay
Offered or promised to pay
contributed or promised to contribute
Contributed or promised to contribute
any money or valuable thing
Any money or valuable thing
or promised any public office or employment
Or promised any public office or employment
as a reward to secure my appointment
As a reward to secure my appointment
or the confirmation thereof
Or the confirmation thereof
so help me God
So help me God
congratulations, mayor.
Sugarland, your next mayor, Carol McCutcheon.
Congratulations, Carol. So proud of you. At this time, I'd like to introduce Pete Olson. Could you come forward, please? Could you come forward, please? Pete will be administering the oath of office to Jim Von der Har.
Jim, smile. Raise your left hand and repeat after me. I, Jim Von der Har
I, Jim Von der Har
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear
That I will faithfully execute the duties of the Office of City Council
I will faithfully execute the duties of the Office of City Council
Of the City of Sugar Land
Of the City of Sugar Land
County of Fort Bend
County of Fort Bend
State of Texas
State of Texas
And will, to the best of my ability, preserve, protect, and defend
And will, to the best of my ability, preserve, protect, and defend
The Constitution
The Constitution
And the laws of the United States
And the laws of the United States
And of this state
And of this state
And the Charter and ordinances of the city
And the Charter and ordinances of the city
And I furthermore solemnly swear
And I furthermore solemnly swear
That I have not directly or indirectly paid, offered or promised to pay
That I have not directly or indirectly paid, offered, paid, or promised to pay
Contributed or promised to contribute any money
Contributed or promised to contribute any money
Or valuable thing
Or valuable thing
Or promised any public office or employment
Or promised any public office or employment
As a reward to secure my appointment
As a reward to secure my appointment
Or the confirmation thereof
Or the confirmation thereof
So help me God
So help me God
Congratulations, Jim. At this time, we are going to call forward Mayor McCutcheon. I get to be the first one to say this publicly. Madam Mayor, would you please do the oath of office for Sanjay Single?
I state your name
I, Sanjay Single
Do solemnly swear or affirm
Do solemnly swear or affirm
That I will faithfully execute
I will faithfully execute
The duties of the Office
The duties of the Office
Of City Council
Of City Council
Of the City of Sugar Land
Of the City of Sugar Land
County of Fort Bend
County of Fort Bend
State of Texas
State of Texas
And will, to the best of my ability
And will, to the best of my ability
Preserve, protect, and defend
Preserve, protect, and defend
The Constitution and laws
The Constitution and laws
Of the United States
Of the United States
And of this state
And of this state
And the Charter and ordinances
And the Charter and ordinances
Of the city
Of the city
And I furthermore solemnly swear or affirm
I furthermore solemnly swear or affirm
That I have not directly or indirectly
That I have not directly or indirectly
Paid, offered, or promised to pay
Paid, offered, or promised to pay
Contributed or promised to contribute
Contributed or promised to contribute
Any money or valuable thing
Any money or valuable thing
Or promised any public office
Or promised any public office
Or employment
Or employment
As a reward to secure my appointment
As a reward to secure my appointment
Or the confirmation thereof
Or the confirmation thereof
So help me God
So help me God
Congratulations, Single. At this time, we're going to take a brief
I'm going to make a couple comments.
Oh, excuse me.
Yeah. Okay, okay. Okay, I want to make a brief remarks here. So anyway, thank you all so much for coming. This means so much to me. I am truly grateful and humbled that the residents of Sugar Land placed your trust in me and elected me to be your next mayor. I would first like to thank my wonderful husband of almost 38 years for the many sacrifices that he's made while I've served the residents of Sugar Land for the past eight years and for the sacrifices he will continue to make. Plus, he's been my number one volunteer. And I'd also like to recognize my longtime friend Betty Wazachek, who flew in from Orlando to be here tonight. So thank you, Betty. And thank you all so much for your support and for those who prayed for me and for everything you did for me to get me to this place. It truly was a team effort. My priorities are public safety, reinvestment in infrastructure, responsible growth that aligns with community values, and fiscal accountability. I believe that leadership starts with listening. My approach is one of collaboration and also transparency and a genuine desire to bring people together. I look forward to working closely with City Council alongside community groups and business leaders to build consensus and to shape thoughtful solutions to move our great city forward. This is the honor of a lifetime, and I am ready to get to work. I love you all. God bless you, and God bless Sugar Land. Thank you all so much. So what we're going to do is we're going to take a 15-minute recess so we can take pictures, and we're going to do it out in the lobby out there. And so 15 minutes for pictures, and then after that, we'll reconvene for a very short council meeting. And then if you all didn't get your pictures in the 15 minutes, we can also take pictures after the council meeting. So I'll see you all outside.
Okay, well, we're ready to reconvene the council meeting. It's going to be short and we'll resume taking pictures afterwards. So, item, agenda item nine, consent agenda. All consent agenda items listed are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the council member requests. Do you have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion by council member Watley, second by council member Jacobson. Let's vote at this time. Do you have to sit safe? Do you have to sit safe? Okay, passes seven zero. Okay, we've got a new system up here. Okay, item agenda ten A, professional services contract with Woolport. Consideration of and action on authorization of a contract with Woolport in the amount of $195,674 for a Sugar Land Regional Airport VertiPort study for the terminal ramp expansion and VertiPort project CIP cap 2501. We have Mitchell Davies, Director of Aviation.
Good evening, City Council, Mayor and City Manager. I'm really excited to talk to you today about our VertiPort project, which is what we're calling Phase One of our Terminal Ramp Expansion and VertiPort Project, or AP 2501. And just to give a little bit of background for those that are not familiar with advanced air mobility, or what we call AAM, it's an emerging technology. It's a revolutionary air mobility technology that's coming to the world. It's coming to Houston. And what it is, is it utilizes electric vertical takeoff and landing, or EVTOL aircraft, as you can see, two examples are below, to move people and cargo. We're focusing on people, using efficient, low-noise EVTOL aircrafts to move people to short and medium distances. And with the exception of approaches and air routes, for the most part of our airspace, it is significantly underutilized. And one of the things that separate EVTOL, let me go back. If you look at the two aircraft there, the one on the bottom left, that's the company called Wisk, Wisk Aero, they're partnered with Boeing. And the one on the bottom right, that's Archer, they're partnered with United. We actually have an agreement with Wisk to bring a VertiPort to Sugar Land by the end of the decade, and I'll talk about that here in a minute. And also Archer has expressed interest in the Houston area with their partnership with United and Bush Intercontinental Airport. What sets EVTOL aircraft apart is they may look like helicopters, but they all may look like drones as well. But they're significantly more quiet and more efficient than traditional helicopters. And so you may be wondering, what is a VertiPort? A VertiPort is a facility where aircraft can land, they can take off, charge their batteries, there's going to be electric aircraft, as well as the movement of, you know, the boarding and deplaning of people and baggage as well. I do want to note that the state of Texas has taken interest and they want to lead the way in the country with AAM, and they formed an advisory committee to advise the legislature and how they can support AAM and the infrastructure. So let's talk about some of the benefits. You know, we are confident that AAM is going to improve the connectivity of Sugar Land. And with that, we believe that there will be an increase in economic activity. More people that are able to get to the city, they'll be able to participate in restaurants and entertainment and shopping. There was a study done by Morgan Stanley Research that indicates and projects that by 2040, there could be a global market share of 1.2 trillion dollars. And so we really want to lead the way in the Houston area and to get Sugar Land a piece of that. And what it can also do is it's going to create jobs directly and indirectly. There's maintenance jobs, operations, pilots, remote pilots, customer service, operations, and we're excited to see that come to Sugar Land. And of course, it's going to reduce travel time, less roadway congestion. It may take a little while before you start seeing an impact on the streets, but we have to start somewhere. And a little bit of background from the airport side. In 2019 and 2020, with our airport master plan, our consultants recommended exploring AAM further. They thought that this is going to be an emerging technology that could have an impact on the industry. We looked into it. We were very hopeful that this is something that could positively impact the airport as well as our city and the region. And in 2021, we partnered with Arizona State University graduate students, and we really wanted to explore this further. We did a preliminary planning effort and looked at what it would look like to have a VertiPort in Sugar Land, and we identified some challenges and some needs in the infrastructure and really helped us prepare for 2023 when Wisk Aero reached out and said, would Sugar Land be interested in having a VertiPort? And we said, absolutely yes. Please help us get there. We definitely need some help and some guidance, and we need an operator to use it. And so shortly after that, they saw that our commitment was to innovation and improving, and so we signed an MOU in early 2024 to bring a VertiPort to Sugar Land. This is what Wisk is calling Phase One, looking at six VertiPorts in the Houston area, connecting to major airports, Bush Intercontinental, Hobby, Ellington, and Sugar Land, as well as two additional sites off airport, the Energy Corridor and downtown Houston at the George R. Brown Convention Center. And this is just Phase One. The goal is to have many more to connect the Houston area. So moving forward with our project, we submitted a request for qualifications or an RFQ in March of 2025. We received five statements of qualifications from five qualified engineering firms. A selection committee was created comprising of airport staff and engineering staff, where we reviewed all of those submittals. We selected the top two, which we interviewed, and ultimately selected Woolport. They really, it was very clear to the committee, the selection committee, that Woolport is leading the way in the industry, from participating with other state planning efforts in states like Florida, Georgia, Virginia, Alaska, and California, and their expertise in the aviation industry on the civil side and planning side, as well as their coordination with some of the aircraft manufacturers. We actually have Zach Schuman here with us from Woolport joining us, just in case anyone has any, some technical questions. So Project Scope, this is a study, so there are quite a few questions that we have, and there's a lot of hurdles we have identified, and Woolport is going to help us navigate them and get some answers to them. Some of the major ones here is finalizing the VertiPort type. This is just a rendering we made. This is really more of a dedicated VertiPort facility. We don't know. That's what is best for us. We don't know. So it's going to be finalizing whether it's some kind of ramp, joint-use ramp VertiPort, or a dedicated VertiPort, or maybe a hybrid. So that's going to be one of the things Woolport will help us identify, as well as the ideal location. There's a lot of considerations for approaches and, you know, the best place and what's most feasible for the airport, as well as helping us get a public engagement strategy and stakeholder workshops. We want to hear from people and get their feedback. And as well as electrification needs, this is going to be the first electric aircraft that we have at the airport, and so we need to, you know, look at what that requires. Funding for the project, for this study, it's going to be $195,674 funded through AP 2501, which is the airport CIP project. Notice proceed, we're anticipating June 2025 with a substantial completion by October 2025. And we do not expect or anticipate any impacts as a result of this study. So we tonight are looking for consideration of an action on authorization of a contract with Woolport in the amount of $195,674 to conduct a VertiPort study. And with that, any questions?
Councilmember Jacobson?
Thank you, Mayor. Mitch, is there any taxpayer dollars being spent on this?
That's a great question. No, sir. The airport is a self-sustaining business enterprise, so all the money that is spent at the airport is collected from airport user fees, such as fuel sales, hangar rent, ramp fees, things of that nature. And so everything that we're going to be spending on this project will come from airport funds.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments council members have? Do I have a motion?
Second.
Oh, okay, second?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion by council member Miller and a second by council member Jacobson. Let's vote at this time. Okay. It's not showing up, though. It's not, I don't see the total vote. I'm assuming it's a seven oh vote? Okay, let's do a hand vote then. Hand vote then. Okay, motion passes seven zero. Okay, next item, agenda item 11A, consideration of and action on City of Sugar Land Resolution Number 2532. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Sugar Land, Texas, accepting state funds appropriated in HB Number One, General Appropriations Act, 88th Legislature, from the Texas Department of Transportation, designated the city manager as authorized representative to execute all agreements, and approving a budget amendment in the amount of state funds to expenditures and revenues from TaxDOT. And again, we have Mitchell Davies, Director of Aviation.
Well, you're all lucky to hear from me twice in one night. Sorry about that. So Resolution 2532, this is for us to accept some funding from the state that was set aside for our runway project. And for those that are not familiar, I'm going to do a quick background. The airport's only runway, 1735, was built in 1985. The concrete is aging, it's reached its useful life, and we've been working on a planning project for a runway rehabilitation probably since 2019 or so, from various different types of inspections. Looking back at our airport master plan, there was a cursory pavement evaluation as part of the project, and it identified the runway as in poor condition and something that the airport needs to look into further. It was recommended to do more of a substantial evaluation. We did that, and the recommendation was a full-blown rehabilitation. And part of the issue is just due to its age and condition, but the aircraft using the airport has changed, you know, drastically since 1985. There's also an element of this project to comply with the current runway design standards with the FAA. So this is a snapshot of the airport. The runway 1735 is identified in green here, and off to the side is the runway safety area identified in orange, and that's that part of the project that's going to get our airport runway up into current FAA design standards. A little bit of background on that project, it's currently in the design phase. We're anticipating construction to begin in January 2027. So one thing that makes this project so challenging is we only have one runway, and so we can't really phase it out, do the complexity of phasing this project over numerous years that we've been able to do, like on our taxiway as an example. So the cost is actually, you know, pretty high for one project that we can't phase. The construction estimate's looking at about $30 million. And so the preliminary assessment, we were planning this, was we were hoping to get $10 million from the state, $10 million from the FAA, and the airport would contribute $10 million as well from CIP AP 2301. But because of that challenge and complexity, getting the funding is even difficult for the FAA to come up with all of the funding. And we were trying to get $20 million, and it was not going to happen. There's just a lot of money for the FAA to give to a general aviation airport, but we didn't want to give up. We wanted to advocate for the project, and so we reached out to the state legislatures, and Senator Huffman's office was able to champion this request through the state budget, and she was able to actually add $10 million into HB One dedicated to the airport's project, which is where you all will help us today approving this resolution, so TaxDOT can write this into a grant. And just a reminder, same thing with the runway project. All funds that go to this project are coming from airport funds and not any tax dollars, general fund or sales tax will be going to this project. So tonight, looking for your consideration of and action on City of Sugar Land Resolution 2532, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Sugar Land, Texas, to accept TaxDOT Aviation HB One appropriation funds for airport runway rehabilitation project. Any questions?
Any questions, council members? Yes, this is council member Watley.
Thank you. I just wanted to recognize Joan Huffman's part in this in 2023 work, and it was a while to get this done. So is there anybody here from her office? No? Oh, are you from Joan Huffman's office? Oh, are you from Joan Huffman's office?
Oh, no.
Okay. No, I just wanted to be sure, and we recognize her, and I'm pretty sure our mayor was going to do so as well, to thank you for the appropriations. $10 million is no small feat, so thank you, and I make a motion to approve at this time.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Watley, a second by Councilmember Miller. Let's vote at this time. I'm not seeing the total. Is that, do you see the total?
Vote in progress.
We'll do a hand vote. Okay, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes seven zero. And I'd like to make a point of personal privilege. I'd like to congratulate councilmembers Von Dehar and Single, as well as our recently elected councilmembers Betcher and Miller. I'd like to make a motion to table item 12. Do I have a second? Okay, second, my Watley hand vote, please. All those in favor? Okay, seven zero. Okay, the meeting is adjourned. Okay, now for more pictures.